Well, good afternoon and welcome to the fourth installment of the KUT and Austin Monitor City Council forums. I'm Jerry Kehonel, the host of All Things Considered for KUT News. Today, we are hearing from three of the candidates running for the District Eight seat. The fourth candidate in this race, Antonio Ross, could not be here with us today, unfortunately. But I do thank the candidates who are here with us for this afternoon's forum. So before we begin, I'm going to lay out the rules really quickly. The candidates will have 60 seconds for an opening statement. After that, we're going to begin the answer, a question and answer section of our forum. You're going to have 60 seconds to answer each question. You don't have to take the entire 60 seconds, but it is all available to you. If you are mentioned in another candidate's response by name, you can request 30 seconds for a rebuttal. Just reach out to me. I'll be timing you on my end here. And like I said, you have 60 seconds to answer your question, 30 seconds for a rebuttal. About seven or so seconds before that minute, you'll see me stretch my fingers out like this, giving you a five-second warning to wrap up your thoughts so that we can move on. Allow everyone to answer the questions with their time. There will be no closing statements, so we'll wrap up the forum shortly after we finish the questions. Just a couple of things, housekeeping things. I ask that you please refrain from any offensive language, gestures, or attacks during the forum. We're just asking that of all of our candidates. Everyone's been really great. I think we've really had a chance to hear what candidates think about the issues, which is most important to the electorate out there. And we also ask that you refrain from using the chat during the forum. So those are the rules. And with that, we're going to begin, and I'm going to be kind of going in a snake format. So let's begin in reverse alphabetical order. Richard Smith, why don't you start us off with your introductory statement?
Hi, I'm Richard Smith. My wife and I have been residents of the Austin area for 25 years. I'm a patent attorney, also a former judge, a former adjunct professor at the University of Texas Law School. I'm currently a member of the Austin's Board of Adjustment. My wife and I have been active in, with the homeless through mobile levels and fishes for a number of years. I decided to run for city council because I couldn't just sit and let our city be destroyed by policies of city council related to crime, homelessness, and frankly, the cost of living in Austin. As city councilman, I will respond to emails, return phone calls, no later than the end of the next business day. I will make public safety a priority. And perhaps most importantly, I will divert the percentage of the 40% pay raise council got to our first responders.
Thank you, Richard. Let's move over to Kimberly, Kimberly Hawkins.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Hawkins. I am a 25-year resident of both Austin and District Eight, with the exception of one year in that timeframe. And I love Austin and I love my neighborhood and this district. I decided to run because I became alarmed at the way Austin has changed in the last four to eight years. It just seems like iconic Austin landmarks have been scrubbed in the name of real estate development. And Austin is just unrecognizable to me anymore. I'm also concerned about things like the conditions of the roads and the just ever ongoing expansion of real estate and roads and all kinds of things. And also the homeless situation. I was a little bit appalled at the lifting of the camping ban, rather than looking for real solutions to the problem. And I wanted-
Yeah, that is, sorry, I'm going to have to jump in there. That is the minute.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay, it's all right. This is the first question, just a reminder, I'll raise my hand and-
I must have missed your hand.
It's all good, no worries, no worries. Okay, finally, let's move over to Paige Ellis.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. I am the current city council member, Paige Ellis. I am pro affordability, I'm pro environment, I'm pro choice, and I want to make sure that we're doing our part to stop gun violence here at the local level. My professional background before holding public office was environmental consulting. So I care a lot about central Texas and the endangered species that we call, that call us home. I have been a champion in helping our community, whether it is road safety improvements, slowing down speeds in neighborhoods, donating $100,000 out of my office budget to improve parks within District Eight, and championing the 20% homestead exemption to help people stay in their homes. I also care a lot about emergency response. I and my team stepped up during the winter storm to make sure that we had access to bottled water distribution and made sure that every neighborhood had a chance to make sure they had clean drinking water during the winter storm. So I care a lot about this community. We've done a lot of work, including improving fire and EMS response times. And I know we can get so much more done with four more years.
Okay, I'm sorry, I gotta, I gotta jump in there for the minute mark. So thank you all for your introductory statements this afternoon. And now we'll get into the question and answer section. So we're going to start a little bit softer here, just so that the electorate out there can get to know you a little bit. Obviously, if you win this election, you're going to represent District Eight at City Hall. But if you are elected, what is a local D8 spot where your constituents might randomly run into their council member? Maybe one of your favorite spots. Let's start with Paige.
I would say probably at the Taco Deli on Spyglass or visiting the Toms right next door. We know and love the people that work there. They helped us a lot in water bottle distribution, making sure that those apartments had access to water. And I see them almost daily and really enjoy on the weekends getting to go to the original Taco Deli that's right here in District Eight.
Fantastic. Kimberly, how about you?
I will say Madrone Coffee Roasters on the Frontage Road of 290 in the old historic Rock Store. I discovered this about four or five months ago, and I'm just so enamored with this place now. It has an open mic on Sunday afternoons, and I will continue to do that just to be accessible to citizens of District Eight and Austin in general. And whether or not I'm elected, I do have a mic around the city. And so I'm thrilled that there is a spot in District Eight.
Fantastic. How about you, Richard?
I'm muted.
Sorry, Richard, you're still muted.
Yeah, I don't think you can beat the Greenbelt in Varden Creek. I mean, they're sort of the iconic landmarks for District Eight. I'm a water person, I'm a tree person. That's one of the things I'm concerned about is the way we're loosening our water quality protections with some of the development. And, you know, I'm one of these people, I was just devastated about what happened out in Oak Hill with the way those trees are like 450 heritage trees destroyed. Yeah, we can't have that kind of thing, and we certainly can't have it in the Greenbelt.
All right, thank you all. Now we'll get into more questions. And just a reminder about the one-minute response time. Let's go, we're going to start with you, Kimberly, this time. What do you believe to be the most important issue facing District Eight?
Facing District Eight, I would say, well, I would like to see the bus route has been expanded. It's a 333, which runs very close to my home, has been expanded, but it doesn't run that frequently. And it's not well utilized. And more routes and more buses is a big thing to me. I know this is supposed to happen with Project Connect, but I think it needs to happen a lot faster because I'm not seeing the electric buses in the fleet. And we're behind on our emissions goals for the city. So that is one thing that is a big concern to me. It takes me over an hour to get from Central Market to my house, and it's less than a 15-minute drive for me. So that's one of my biggest issues that I would like to talk about more and more with the citizens.
Okay, thank you, Richard. How about you, the biggest issue facing District Eight?
Yeah, I would say property taxes. So many people that I've met blockwalking, the gamut runs from someone who has told me that they were going to move because they couldn't afford to live in Austin. Just recently saw a for sale sign in his yard. People are worried about their ability to afford living in Austin going forward, and so they're beginning to plan to leave. And I've certainly heard from people who have already left. And, you know, we've got to get our property taxes under control, and it doesn't seem the city council gets that. So certainly, one of the big things that I'll be working on is try to reduce property taxes and make it more affordable for people who are in their homes and be able to age in their homes. And, you know, not have to give up their homes just because they can't afford them anymore. I mean, many people have their mortgage paid off, but they're basically paying rent by the big property tax bill they get every year. And that's a big concern for a lot of people. Thanks.
Thank you. Paige, how about you, the biggest issue, the most important issue facing District Eight?
The biggest issue that we hear about is road safety. There are far too many cars going at high rates of speed. One example is on Slaughter Lane, there was a younger gentleman going 80 to 90 miles an hour right next to a sidewalk where kids walk to middle school. So we had to make sure we pulled a community meeting together very quickly to look at what improvements could be made immediately to help slow down the traffic. A lot of the neighborhoods in District Eight were built with very wide roads, which at the time meant fire trucks could get through quicker. Well, now we know fire trucks can get through on roads that are not quite as wide. So people are driving way too fast through the neighborhoods, which is why we care a lot about stop signs, crosswalks, narrowing the lanes of traffic, lowering speed limits, speed bumps, you name it. We're working with all community partners to try to slow people down in neighborhoods.
Thanks, y'all. Richard, I'm going to start with you this round. You kind of talked a little bit about it last, with your last response. The question is, how do you plan to address the affordability crisis in your district and across the city as a whole?
Sure, so there's sort of two components to this. One is actually building affordable housing. District Eight is way behind on that. In 2017, they were, they committed to building a certain number of affordable houses in District Eight. And as of now, four years later, four or five years later, where only 2% of those homes were built. You've got to have the will to build affordable housing. And that involves making sure that you, you're making the decisions and not developers. So you can, we can build, we can, we can solve the affordability problem for new housing. But the other problem, as I mentioned, that is the folks that are living in their homes now and want to age in place. And one of the ways you can cut taxes is by using zero-based budgeting, where basically you don't let the department say, well, I need this amount of money because that's the amount of money I had last year, plus some. You know, you've got to have the departments basically start from zero. And you've got to be, again, you've got to have the will to cut things. It's going to hurt, it's going to hurt to a lot of people, but you've got to have the will to cut the budget so that you can keep people's property taxes bound down. And I know we can do it. We just have to have the guts and the will to do it.
Thank you, Richard. Paige, let's go to you. If you were elected for your second term, how would you continue to work to address the affordability crisis in Austin?
So I think there's more than one way to help with the affordability crisis, one of which is fixing the 1984 Land Development Code that was built for a city less than half the size of what it is today. We have an entire generation of missing middle housing that was never built. And therefore, you're not seeing those market rate affordable units available for people who want to buy their first home and start their family, as a lot of people are in District Eight. I was also a proud co-sponsor, original co-sponsor of the 20% homestead exemption because I keep an eye on the people in our community who are on fixed income and are just paying their utility bills and their property tax bills and trying to make sure that we are looking at that very discerningly. That's why I didn't support the PSA adjustment that recently came before council because I know that that was going to impact family budgets. So it comes from both directions. It comes with allowing for more housing stock, reducing issues like compatibility that, that mean housing won't get built. So you have to look at it both ways.
Thank you. Kimberly, if you were elected, how would, how do you plan to afford, address the affordability crisis? It looks like you're muted.
I apologize, I hit the wrong words and couldn't find you for a few seconds.
I'll just restate the question to give you a little bit of time after you did that. Again, how do you plan, if elected, to address the affordability crisis?
Well, affordability is actually the number one issue according to the Austin Monitor survey that was taken in the last year. And the housing issue is critical. I just learned that they are tearing down the Brody Oaks Shopping Center and going to put in condos there. And I'm concerned that there won't be housing set aside for people who make less than $40,000 a year, which is my situation. I know that a lot of people are moving out of Boston. A lot of people are sick of the rising costs of living in Austin. And also, the more routes, more buses idea that I put forth in my earlier answer, I think is something that could impact affordability. I would like people to be able to use their cars less and be able to go downtown without having to book an Uber ride, which that is what I do right now for my main source of income. And I talk to a lot to people and I ask them, you know, do they ever ride the bus? And the bus just isn't tenable, the bus routes, you know, to wait 45 minutes for a bus and then to take one that's going to take an hour to get downtown.
I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to jump in there, Kimberly, that we reached the minute mark.
Did I take my time?
Yes, yes, thank you, though. So I'm going to, I'm going to, my next question, I'm going to phrase it a little bit differently to one candidate and then to the other. Paige, you just said a couple of seconds ago, you talked about the land development code. The city has tried multiple times and failed to rewrite that code. Do you think that that is still the most effective way of addressing the affordability crisis? It's obviously something that you still support.
Yes, I mean, the code itself is broken. There are reviewers within development services that may give one applicant a certain answer, and then the applicant goes to another reviewer in a different phase, and they're getting a conflicting answer. It's really important to make sure that our code functions. There are portions of it that were within the code rewrite that, that I worked on, that people agreed with most of the text, and it was much cleaner. So I think there are some improvements that can be made pretty quickly to update the code. But we certainly have to allow for more flexibility where people have the ability to build on their lot. There are people who can't even reach their base zoning because of some of the overlapping regulations. So it's important to make sure that our code, at the bare minimum, functions, which it doesn't right now.
Thank you. Let me, I'm going to rephrase the question here for Kimberly first and then Richard. The city has tried and failed to rewrite the land development code. Is that something that you support? And how do you think it could affect your district, Kimberly?
I'm sorry, there we go. You cut out a little bit in the middle.
I can repeat it. The city has tried and failed to rewrite the land development code in an effort to, to help the affordability crisis. Is a rewrite of the code something that you support? And how do you think it could affect District Eight?
Yes, I definitely think a rewrite is, I would support that because right now, the process is so onerous and takes so long that people can't make much needed repairs to their homes without it being very expensive because of the process taking so long and building fees being so high. I also think that we need to get the message out that infill in, in areas can be done with multi-unit, like duplexes and quadruplexes, even when the other homes are single-family homes. I had a, my hairstylist complain about that, and I told her, I said, that's the way to, you know, start to bring down affordability. It just boggles my mind that with all this real estate development, our property taxes keep going up. You would think that the, the burden would be spread out a little bit. So I would definitely support a rewrite.
Thank you, Richard. Let me phrase it for you one last time here. The city has tried and failed to rewrite the land development code. Is that something that you would support as part of your candidacy? And how do you think it would affect your district?
Sure, so let's be, let's start from the beginning here. The reason the city's efforts in the past to rewrite the land development code have failed is because they tried to do it in a large scale without giving residents notice and the ability to protest to changes. That was found to be illegal in the Akuna decision. So let me say that going forward, we have to have and allow notice and protest rights for the citizens. And I know the city council recently has taken that away again, probably illegal in terms of the vertical misuse decision they were making. But let me just say, the land development code is being changed piece by piece when people come before the council to get a variance or something else with respect to the land, the property that they're dealing with. And, you know, as long as there's proper notice and protest rights for people, if, you know, do it on a piece-by-piece basis, I'm fine with. But, you know, this whole idea, you're going to rewrite the whole land development code, that's going to be tough if you follow the law and give notice and protest rights to people.
Thank you, Richard. Okay, let's move on to our next question. The questions that you're being asked today, some of them come from the KUT and Austin Monitor newsrooms. Some of them come from audience members, and this was a sentiment that we got a lot in the submitted questions. And we're going to start first with Kimberly. Kimberly, if you're elected to represent District Eight, how do you plan to address homelessness here in Austin?
One of the things that has recently come to my attention, I was invited to the Salvation Army forum, wasn't really a forum, it was just a meeting to, a meet and greet to tour the facility and to hear what they do. And I was concerned because the Salvation Army has had a past of discriminating or making LGBT clients uncomfortable. But they brought that up even before I asked, and they very much try to make people comfortable, no matter who they are. So I was reassured about that. And they have a, they have a system that is working. They, they stated that they have an 80 to 90% success rate in getting people into permanent housing. But they only get $3 million from the city, and they've requested more, and it's been declined. So I would look to programs that are working, like Salvation Army and other things.
Okay, thank you. That's the one-minute mark there. Thank you for your answer, Kimberly. Let's go now to Richard. Richard, how do you plan, if elected, to represent District Eight to address homelessness in your district, but also across the city as a whole?
Sure, thank you. So as you know, I had quite a lot of experience working with the homeless hands-on. So homeless are near and dear to my heart. That said, we've got to change the narrative, the false narrative that the city has that homelessness is a housing problem. It's not fundamentally a housing problem. It's fundamentally a problem of addiction, dependence, trauma, the underlying issues that manifest themselves as a symptom of living on the street. And so the first thing we've got to do is we've got to enforce the public camping ban. It's not humane or kind to let people sleep on the streets, stay on the streets. So we've got to enforce the camping ban. The second thing is we've got to focus on recovery, efforts at recovery of the, again, the underlying issues that give rise to people staying on the streets and living on the streets. If we can do that, we won't have people on the streets if we can, or at least we can cut down the number of people on the streets if we can get them the treatment they need. That's the humane thing to do. And so that's what I work on. I would also encourage the churches, mosques, and temples get involved.
Thank you for your answer, Richard. Paige, we'll finish with you there. If you are reelected, how do you plan to continue addressing the homelessness issue here in Austin?
So homelessness in Austin certainly has many different facets of trying to help people. There does need to be mental health care, job skills training. I developed the Clean Creeks Crew, which is a jobs pipeline, have supported the Other Ones Foundation, which is also creating jobs for people to be able to get back on their feet. But housing is a component of it. When people can't afford to keep a roof over their head or they're victims of intimate partner violence, there has to be places for people to go. So I know that right now, there's some angles that need to be better right-sized. But we absolutely cannot rely on our criminal justice system ticketing people and putting them in jail if their only infraction is that they don't have a place to go. It's only going to set them back more, make it harder for them to get a job and get a roof over their head. So there has to be the right sizing of permanent supportive housing, bridge shelter housing, mental health care. And we, above everything else, have to be transparent and show the successes along the way, or people won't know.
Okay, fantastic, thank you all. This next question is kind of a hybrid question from a D8 constituent who wanted to know a little bit more about lifeguard staffing shortages. So the question, Richard, we're going to begin with you. We're seeing staffing shortages affect several city departments, whether it be lifeguards or emergency response personnel. If elected, how would you begin to address these shortages?
Well, gosh, you know, we do have a lot of shortages. And all I can say is that at this point, it's a totally lack of planning and expectation and making sure we don't have shortages going forward. Every department is different, there's a reason why they may be short of staff. I know the police department is short of staff because of policies by city council. And it started with the so-called defunding movement. And it has demoralized, decimated our police department. And that's one of the reasons we don't, we have people speeding. And they're, we've got record traffic fatalities, we've got record homicides. And again, it all goes back to a proper staffing, and that's just one example. But I think you'd have to go on a case-by-case basis in terms of each department and find out what the, what the issue is. I know the issue with 911 appears to be, appears to be camp compensation because they can get 911, call, call receivers can get much more money in surrounding communities. So, you know, again, there's a, there's a different situation. Not every, not every department needs more money.
Let's move over to Paige now. Paige, how would you go about beginning to address shortages across several city departments?
Specifically with lifeguards, we were able to increase their starting wage by a dollar per hour and incentivize them with signing bonuses, midsummer bonuses, and end-of-season bonuses. So there are ways to incentivize. Lifeguarding is really important to me. It was my first job. I ended up being a CPR instructor by the time I graduated college. I think it's a good jobs pipeline, pipeline into the EMS profession or firefighting, if that's something that people are really passionate about. I think that we can be stronger about creating those jobs pipelines. But there's many departments with vacancies. One of the, the gives and takes of a strong economy is that there is more jobs than people looking for jobs, and everyone's having to step up. We increased minimum wage at the city of Austin. They did it with AISD and ACC. So we're now at $20 an hour starting wage, and the state minimum wage is still $7.25 an hour. You can't pay rent with that. You can't go to the doctor with money like that. So we do need to make sure that we're competitive in the market and the best employer in town.
Thank you, Paige. All right, Kimberly, let's finish off this question with you. If you are elected to represent District Eight, how would you begin to address staffing shortages in the city?
Yeah, yesterday I noticed an ad on Cat Metro Bus, and I thought, that's probably a good way to recruit for things like lifeguards and staffing shortages, because I don't think a lot of people realize that these, these situations are really at a critical level. And I think, I think the idea of recruiting high school kids and college kids is a good idea. Many moons ago, I- Many moons ago, I trained for emergency water safety with um, a Red Cross program. And so I would recruit with that type, uh, with that. I would work to implement a plan for training. Because you know, to say we're short of lifeguards means that somebody who's qualified to do that has to apply. I think we should be training people to do it. And I think we can get the message out through different modes like Cat Metro and open mics and just the, that general type of messaging.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's move on to our next question here. Um, we're gonna start this time with Paige. Uh, Austin Energy is operating at a loss and that's translating to higher bills for customers. Uh, KUT's Andrew Weber had a piece earlier this month, I believe, about uh, customers maybe seeing a fifteen dollar increase to their bills. Uh, i- if you are re-elected to council, how would you go about uh, addressing those, uh, the increased bills for customers?
This recently came to us with the power supply adjustment, which I, I did not ultimately support mostly because I heard there was just a lack of understanding in the community about how this impacted their family budgets. Um, the power supply adjustment in all reality is reflective of the ERCOT market. We all know that ERCOT, even though the R stands for reliability, isn't really doing that part very well right now. So even though Austin Energy did not price gouge at, right after the winter storm. We are now seeing the global markets increase that cost of power for everybody that's um, operating in utilities in Texas with the exception of parts of West Texas that aren't um, you know, members of ERCOT. So I think it's important that Austin Energy is really transparent with their ratepayers, that they're able to explain how this is going to impact their budgets. We also have a rate case review, which is separate from the power supply adjustment that's going to come to council. And I want to make sure that people who are conserving energy and improving their homes to be good conservers of energy aren't the ones footing the bill for the dollars that Austin Energy has to make up.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Kimberly, we're gonna move to you now. Uh, again, Austin Energy is operating at a loss, which is meaning higher bills for the end consumer and there unfortunately is no other game in town. So if you are elected, how would you go about helping to address those, that increase in billing?
I think that we need to um, push more and more for uh, solar energy. Because it can reduce your bill. It, you know, it's not gonna reduce your bill miraculously or drastically in the beginning. But it will reduce over time. And I don't think there's um, enough reliable uh, information um, out there for people. I, I know my mother thinks most of these programs are a scam, so she's worried about it. And um, she owns her home and I've tried to encourage her to do that. Uh, but even I am a little unsure about where to go to look for that. I also think that we need to um, encourage conservation dramatically. I think that's gonna be one of the few ways. I know I do it. I set my thermostat at eighty most days and um, I don't, I think people just assume that that they just can't live unless their thermostat is at like seventy, which blows my mind, but um, for immediate impact, I think we're gonna have to look at conservation and for uh, shorter term but longer range impact, I think solar energy could be the answer for a lot of people.
Okay, thank you, Kimberly. And uh, Richard, we're gonna close it up here with you. Um, Austin Energy operating at a loss and that's meaning higher bills for customers. Uh, if you are elected, how would you go about helping uh, people to address that increase in bills?
Sure. The first thing I'll do is insist upon a comprehensive, independent audit of both Austin Water and Austin Energy. Uh, there's clearly been some mismanagement that's led to where we are right now. The other thing I would insist upon is to stop for the city, for the city to stop taking money. And the millions and millions of dollars, I think last year was a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty, something like that, million dollars that they go into the general fund from uh, Austin Electric, uh, Austin Energy. And I think that you know, if you want to be transparent, let's be transparent. Okay, and Austin Energy ought to stop charging people for that and the city ought to run the city uh, without using Austin Energy just as a cash machine. Um, but again, I think there's been some mismanagement there. Certainly people have recognized that the the need for the increase, significant increase this time was because Austin Energy didn't, didn't space out the actual extra charges over time, like many other uh, energy uh, departments have done in other, in other cities. So uh, again, we've got to look at the management, we've got to look at the expenses, the, the finances and uh, we, we can get this fixed.
All right, fantastic. Well, we've got our final question for this afternoon's forum and Kimberly, we're gonna be, begin with you. Uh, this question is from a parent uh, saying that uh, employee, employers and businesses here in Austin are reporting that it's hard to find affordable quality childcare. And uh, when it, when they can find it, it's expensive and that cost is causing many families to move away. So Kimberly, beginning with you, uh, in your view, if you were elected, uh, what would be the city's role in helping to reduce that childcare cost burden?
I think that um, the city could set up programs uh, potentially with uh, our aging population to encourage um, childcare centers that are definitely more affordable. Um. I, I fortunately have not had to deal with this issue in quite a long time, but um, uh, obviously it hinders people going to work and it hinders people's budget. And the city, you know, I, I don't know what the city is doing right now for that, quite frankly. Um. I think, and I know that childcare workers are hard to keep it, you know, in childcare centers. So you know, the, it's hard to keep them because they're not paid enough and it's hard to keep them because it's a stressful job. So the city needs a grant program or a, uh, you know, a recruitment program as we do for many of our departments, but um.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
I would look into.
Thank you, Kimberly. Uh, Richard, let's go to you. Uh, um, when, if you were to be elected to represent District Eight, uh, what do you think is the city's role in helping to reduce that childcare cost burden?
Well, yeah, I think the fundamental role is to keep people's cost of living in Austin down by dealing with property taxes and other fees like this, uh, like these fees that come out of Austin Energy. I mean, uh, it is expensive for childcare. I'm, thank God, I'm not having to deal with that anymore, but it is expensive. Um, I think that's one way they can help. Um, I think we ought to take a look at some of the childcare permitting. I don't know if that's an obstacle to people starting childcare businesses. But I think we ought to make, make sure that the permitting is uh, you know, make sure that the facilities are safe. But they're not, there's not a barrier for people to start childcare uh, uh, facilities.
Okay, thank you, Richard. And how about you, Paige?
This is another cost driver of family budget. So most people, the housing is the biggest part of their family budget. And then next either comes transportation or childcare, depending on how that pans out financially. We all know that this disproportionately impacts the mothers in each household because by the time you're paying for two kids to be in daycare, sometimes that means one of the parents is not working full-time anymore and it's usually the mom. There are things that we can do, like in the past, there had been zoning overlays to specifically prohibit childcare as um, as something that was not a permitted use within a zoning case. We have now taken steps to make sure that that's not happening anymore. So when people come for a, a change in their zoning, we're not prohibiting childcare as a use. We also need to make sure that the city properties, as we have our own land to redevelop, that we are looking at the opportunity to put childcare facilities in those city-owned properties. And I also would love to partner with the ACC Pinnacle Campus to do affordable house, housing and childcare on their property um, as they choose to redevelop that location.
Fantastic. Well, thank you. Uh, with that, I want to thank Paige Ellis, Kimberly Hawkins and Richard Smith for, for being here this afternoon and for providing some really thoughtful uh, answers to our questions. I, I know that I learned a little bit this afternoon from the three of you and I hope that anyone who's tuning in learned a little something. Uh, again, Antonio Ross could not be here with us this afternoon, but he is also a candidate uh, running for District Eight council seat here in Austin. Uh, just some quick closing notes. Same time tomorrow, KUT and the Austin Monitor are gonna host the final city council forum with the candidates for District Nine. Uh, that one's gonna be hosted by our buddies at the Austin Monitor. Uh, just a reminder, early voting begins October twenty-fourth. Election Day is November eighth. Once again, I'm Jerry Kehanal with KUT News. I want to thank the candidates for being here and thank the audience for joining us. Y'all have a great rest of your day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, y'all. Good luck.
Take care.